Whenever you're ready, Rich.
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August 26th, 2020 zoning board of adjustments meeting. Our next meeting will be on September 30th, 2020 at 7:00 PM, which will also be done virtually via Zoom as we are tonight. Before we get started tonight, I just have something I need to read. As Chair of the Merrimack Zoning Board of Adjustment, due to COVID-19 crisis and in accordance with the Governor, or with Governor Sununu's, Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to Governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are, A) Providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through the dialing of either of the following phone numbers: The meeting ID is 966-1559-6289. The meeting may also be viewed on Merrimack TV Channel 20 on Comcast, or Merrimack TV Facebook Live page, which is www.facebook.com/merrimacktv. B) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided in the meeting agenda, posted on the Town of Merrimack's website at www.merrimacknh.gov/zoning-board. C) Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please email cwolf@merrimacknh.gov. D) Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have to have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting will be done via roll call. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. So I'll go first. My name is Rich Conescue. I am the Chairman of the Zoning Board. And there is no one present in the room with me. Ben, would you like to go next?
Yes, Ben Niles, alternate member, and I am alone in this room.
Rodney?
I'm Rod Buckley, a full-time member, and there's no one in the room with me.
Kathy?
Kathy Stroud, Vice Chair. There is no one in the room with me.
Patrick?
Patrick Dwyer, full-time member, and I'm all alone.
Okay. All right. So continuing down the line, Patrick, do you happen to have the preamble?
Unfortunately, I don't have that in front of me. I apologize. And I don't have it in a place that I can grab it real quickly.
No worries. Kathy, do you have the preamble?
Uh, no.
Rodney?
Nope. I've never got the copy. Sorry.
Not in front of me, unfortunately.
Okay. I do have the preamble in front of me, so I'll go ahead and read it in. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will proceed with the petition in the order they are listed on the agenda unless the board deems it appropriate to take a petition out of order. State law and local ordinances set up the criteria that must be met in order for this board to grant a request. The minimum requirements are outlined on the form provided by the Community Development Office, and the petitioner should proceed with this format to provide adequate justification for the board to grant the request. The Chair will then open the meeting to hear testimony either for or against the request. All discussion will be between the Speaker and the Board. Please be respectful of all, and in the interest of time refrain from repeating previous testimony. No new documentation will be accepted by the Board for consideration this evening, but the Board reserves the right to ask for additional testimony at any time. After hearing the facts from all parties regarding a petition, the Chairman will close the public hearing and the Board will deliberate and vote on the request before moving on to the next petition. I would say please turn off all cell phones and pagers, but that could potentially disconnect you from this meeting. So with that being said, the first agenda item that we will have tonight is the annual meeting, the Election of Officers and Review of Rules and Procedures. So as far as this goes, before we go into election, does any portion, and this question is for you, Casey, is any portion of this that needs to be read in, or do we need to vote on accepting the, um, the, um, the rules of procedure?
Uh, so there are no proposed changes to the rules of procedure, so the only vote that is necessary are the votes to elect the Chair and the Vice Chair.
Okay. I guess, I guess with that being said, the, the first position to nominate is the Chair.
Rich, do you want to do it again?
Sure.
I nominate Rich for Chair.
I second.
All right. Nomination made by Patrick for myself as Chair, seconded by Rodney. I will take votes by, by roll call. So Patrick, are you in favor?
In favor.
Rodney, are you in favor?
In favor.
Um, actually, before I continue with this, I should state that I do need, Ben, I need you to sit in for Lynn tonight since she is not present.
Right. Well, I'm working.
Okay. So Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
Kathy, are you in favor?
Yes.
Okay. I will abstain. So 4-0-1. Um, the next, I would like a motion for Vice Chair.
Kathy, are you interested in staying Vice Chair?
Sure.
So I then a motion for Kathy to remain in the role of Vice Chair for ZBA.
I second it.
Okay. Motion made for Kathy as Vice Chair, uh, made by Patrick and seconded by Rodney. Uh, Patrick, are you in favor?
I'm in favor.
Rodney, are you in favor?
I'm in favor.
Ben, are you in favor?
Yes, I am in favor.
Kathy, are you in favor?
I abstain.
You abstain? And I am in favor. So 4-0-1. Kathy will remain as Vice Chair.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you. Continuing down the list, we have RCL Realty, Petitioner Owner, Variance Under Section 3.02 of the Zoning Ordinance to Permit a Lot Following a Lot Line Adjustment, with 42,996 square feet of lot area, whereas 80,000 square feet is required, and 186.77 feet of depth, whereas 200 feet is required. The parcel is located at 21 Elizabeth Drive in the R2 Residential District, Tax Map 3A, Lot 010, Case ZBA 2020-10. This item was continued from the July 29th meeting.
Uh, Rich?
Yes.
If you would like to, you can read in all of the RCL Realty variance requests. Uh, and if, uh, if you would like to do it this way, you could have, uh, the presenter present all of these at once, uh, but then vote on them separately as a Board.
All right. Uh, that, that works for me. Um, so the next, uh, variance, which is Item 5, RCL Realty LLC, Petitioner Owner, Variance Under Section 3.02 of the Zoning Ordinance to Permit a Lot Following a Lot Line Adjustment, with 41,268 square feet of lot area, whereas 80,000 square feet is required, 182.89 feet of depth, whereas 200 feet is required, and 50 feet of frontage, whereas 200 feet is required. Parcel is located at 15 Elizabeth Drive in the R2 Residential District, Tax Map 3A, Lot 013, Case ZBA 2020-11. This is also continued from July 29. RCL Realty, uh, Item 6, uh, Variance Under Section 3.02 of the Zoning Ordinance to Permit a Lot Following a Lot Line Adjustment, with 50,174 square feet of lot area, whereas 80,000 square feet is required, 155.68 feet of depth, whereas 200 feet is required, and 59.19 feet of frontage, whereas 200 feet is required. Parcel is located at 11 Elizabeth Drive in the R2 Residential District, Tax Map 3A, Lot 014, Case ZBA 2020-12, also continued from July 29. Item 7, RCL Realty, Variance Under Section 3.02 of the Zoning Ordinance to Permit a Lot Following a Lot Line Adjustment, with 49,524 square feet of lot area, whereas 80,000 square feet is required, and 25 feet of frontage, whereas 200 feet is required. The parcel is located at 4 Squires Drive in the R2 Residential District, Tax Map 3A, Lot 015, Case ZBA 2020-13, also continued from July 29. Item number 8, RCL Realty, Variance Under Section 3.02 of the Zoning Ordinance to Permit a Lot Following a Lot Line Adjustment, with 48,258 square feet of lot area, whereas 100,000 square feet is required, and 185 feet of depth, whereas 300 feet is required. Parcel is located at 14 Elizabeth Drive in the R1 Residential by Soils District, Tax Map 3A, Lot 025, Case ZBA 2020-14. This item is also continued from July 29. And the, uh, last variance here is, uh, Item 9, RCL Realty LLC, Variance Under Section 3.02 of the Zoning Ordinance to Permit a Lot Following a Lot Line Adjustment, with 61,913 square feet of lot area, whereas 100,000 square feet is required, and 185 feet of depth, whereas 300 feet is required. The parcel is located at 18 Elizabeth Drive in the R1 Residential by Soils District, Tax Map 3A, Lot 026, Case ZBA 2020-15, which was also continued from July 29. And, um, if I could, anybody who is going to speak regarding these petitions, I would need you to state your full name, um, clearly for us, and, um, I will be swearing those of you in.
Attorney Rick Michael.
Attorney Brett Allard.
Okay. Are you the only two people speaking on these petitions?
I believe so.
Okay. If you could raise your right hand, uh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And I see RCL Realty, uh, now on here. Uh, will you be speaking during the presentation of these petitions?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Attorney Michael, go ahead.
Thank you. As Chairman of Members, I appreciate the fact that there are five members that we can proceed with these petitions. It's all a group. I think the important thing, although it's been laid out with six different petitions, I think it's important to understand when you're talking about a older grandfathered subdivision, which currently still has nine lots left, nine. At the end of our presentation, we're looking to have eight lots left, and I'll do my best to take you through it. We can also show the map. I know that we filed with the application a plan entitled ZBA Exhibit Norman the Estates, which highlights the lot numbers that, uh, Chairman Brett took aboard as it relates to these various lots. I would point out that Elizabeth Drive, if you look at the plan, was designed to make a, a sweep, a big U, intersecting with Charles Road. And only a portion of it, basically the eastern portion of Elizabeth Drive, was, was built. And it kind of ends, I use a, say the word spastically, there's no hammerhead, there's no good circle. We'll talk about that briefly shortly. And that area of Norman the Estates was developed. I would point out that the lots and the developed portion are approximately the same size as the lots we're proposing because it was all one development. It was approved back in 1969. The roadway that comes off the westerly portion of Elizabeth Drive was never built, and the connection was never made. In other words, that U was never constructed. And the lots that we're speaking of, and again, we're looking initially, initially, at nine lots, uh, front that area of Elizabeth Drive that was not built. I would point out that none of the lots, even the ones that, uh, we don't need variances for that are grandfathered, none of them meet the strict requirements of today. In other words, the 80 or 100,000 square feet, 200 to 250 feet of frontage. None of, none of them meet that standard, and none of the lots that have been constructed on Elizabeth Drive meet that standard. The lots that we're proposing are consistent with the area, consistent with the layout that was made. I would point out that our proposal, in effect, increases the size of every lot except, except for the two grandfathered lots that we don't need relief. And those are lots 11 and 12. If you look at the plan and you look at the, the, the westerly side of what is, what, what is proposed to be Elizabeth Street Extension, 11 and 12, there are no variances for us because lots are not being changed at all. We're making some changes to the balance of the lots, and all of it increases the size. The frontages, uh, most of them remain the same or are larger. We have three lots, which are 13, 14, and 15, which become a bit larger. But the frontage changes, and the reason the frontage changes is because we intend to come in on the built portion of Elizabeth Drive and build, uh, a much safer, uh, kind of a hammerhead arrangement that will allow, uh, easier access to the town, emergency vehicles, snowplows, and so forth, which currently does not exist. My client will be paying for that. And in fact, the only lot that would use that portion of Elizabeth Drive, the built portion, the built portion of Elizabeth Drive that exists now would be Lot 15. Uh, one of the, uh, I think one of the beneficial aspects of our proposal is the balance of the lots that are but the to-be-built area of Elizabeth Drive will use the new portion. It won't be an intermix of traffic. In effect, you'll have traffic coming in with a cul-de-sac to access, uh, seven of the eight lots. And you'll have one of the lots, uh, only one, exiting on the existing Elizabeth Drive. And we feel that's somewhat advantageous. It keeps the lots a bit more private. It will contribute to traffic, to the existing road system that currently exists. The frontage, really, uh, again, as I pointed out in the past, if you take a look at the Supreme Court's view of frontage, it's designed to prevent overcrowding and, and, and those types of issues. That isn't the case here. All of these lots are currently in place. And if we were to build Elizabeth Drive, we showed in the plan, which we don't want to do, we don't think that's a good way to go with this. But if we were to build it, we could build all of the lots in it. But we don't think that's the best way to go. The best way to go is to discontinue, or I should say, undedicate, portion of Squire Drive, a portion of Elizabeth Drive. When we undedicate those, a number of the lots gain area. Lot 15 gains some area, Lot 14 gains some area. And a couple of the abutting lots, Lot 17 and Lot 24, gains some area as well. Those lots, in effect, become a bit larger under the middle of the road rule, which means that when you undedicate, in this case because the road isn't built, or discontinue the build on, the area on either side of the cell line goes back to the lot where it belongs. So that's kind of what we're, what we're, what we're doing here. I'd point out that lots 25, 26, and 27, which are currently, again, grandfathered lots, our plan is to get rid of Lot 27 and increase the size of Lot 26 and Lot 25. That will increase their size and their frontage. We're going to eliminate that particular parcel. I point you to Lot 10, which is above Charles Road. And our plan is to redesign, and the reason we're getting rid of Lot 27 is there's going to be a reduction and redesign of the entrance to that portion of Elizabeth Drive. And in the process, uh, Lot, Lot 10 changes a bit. How it changes is that it gets a bit more frontage and a little bit more area, is what happens. It gets bigger. If you look at the, the plan that we've given you. We think this is a, a, a good way to deal with this. Uh, we, we lose one of the lots, but we believe that by developing this particular area, this fashion, does a couple of things. It enhances the existing lots that are left, and, in effect, removes 99% of the traffic that would go over the existing Elizabeth Drive because it will not interconnect. We're going to improve the, uh, turnaround area at the end of the existing Elizabeth Drive. And also we'll install a cul-de-sac in the new area that we construct. And we think that overall, this is, this is a, this is a good way to go. We think that this is a good way to deal with lots that our client has the right to build on. We think that from an economic standpoint, it's financially prudent to do it this way. And, uh, we believe that the Board hopefully can look favorably on it. As you can see, all of this is tied together. It's not, uh, we'll kind of give a variance over here, and we won't give a variance over there. I mean, this is a, these variances, uh, staff had us break out because they applied us up to lots. And we understand that. That makes it more definitive, if you will, in terms of what the Board might grant. Uh, so we, we certainly accept their, their, the way that they've handled that issue. But I want to point out that this is a, you know, it's, it's a total project. It's a total plan that we're presenting. And the, and the variance is really, most of it, you know, relates to lot size. Well, we can't meet a, they never met it. For all, none of them meet it, even the grandfathered ones that we don't need relief on. We are reconfiguring some of these lots to, again, we believe, enhance the traffic flow and keep the traffic on the new lots going, as I've pointed out on one of the pieces of Elizabeth Drive, and keeping them off the west, the easterly portion of Elizabeth Drive. With that in mind, uh, I'm going to have Brett Allard take you through the criteria. And I would suggest that the criteria, for the most part, apply to all of the lots that we're talking about. If the Board has specific questions about any of the specific parcels or relief, uh, please feel free to ask them. Thank you for your attention. We appreciate your concern with this.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman and Members of the Board. Uh, the first thing I'm actually going to do before diving into the criteria, is share my screen here so I can pull up the plan and point to a few things. Everyone see that okay?
Yes.
Yes.
So I just wanted to point out where some of these requests for relief are happening because it can be a little tough to follow, uh, just by listening to it. So here's Lot 15 up here. That's going to have 25 feet of frontage on what is essentially going to be the new Hammerhead uh, at the end of the existing Elizabeth Drive. Down here is Lot 14. That's going to have, uh, that actually has 208 total feet of frontage between the Hammerhead, the portion down here on the proposed new cul-de-sac. Uh, but the most conservative, uh, side of the frontage would be the 59 feet down here on this side of the, uh, proposed cul-de-sac. Uh, and then Lot, uh, 13 has 50 feet right here on the westerly edge of the cul-de-sac. The other spots down here in terms of Lot 10, that's getting a little bit more area here. 27, 25, and 26 are the three lots that are becoming two. Uh, so we have nine lots going down to eight total. Uh, and certainly if the Board has any questions about any specifics on the plan, uh, I'd be happy to answer those. So without further ado, I will jump right into the, uh, variance criteria. So granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Uh, lot size, depth, and frontage requirements, as Attorney Michael said, are really mechanisms to prevent overcrowding, uh, congested development. All these lots are large enough to accommodate single-family homes in septics, and actually, to the extent any of the lot sizes are changing with respect to the adjustments, they're actually becoming bigger. They'll all have safe and adequate access onto the street, whether that's the existing Elizabeth Drive for Lot 15, or the, uh, Charles Road extension. I've been calling it for lots 12 and 13. Uh, there'll be no threats to the public health, safety, or welfare. Uh, and again, just to touch on the Supreme Court's sort of view of this prong, they've said that to be contrary to the public interest. The variance must not duly conflict with the ordinance such that it violates basic zoning objectives. And that's simply not the case here. Uh, and in addition, the turnaround area, um, the new Hammerhead turnaround this area is going to be something that will be in the public interest because it will become, uh, hopefully, you know, safer, uh, and, and more efficient for emergency vehicles to make maneuvers in that area where our understanding is they can't do that at the moment, or they have extreme difficulty doing it at the moment.
All right. Um, does anybody on the Board have any questions regarding? All right. Please continue.
Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed, and the Supreme Court has held that because it's in the public interest to uphold the spirit of the ordinance, uh, these two criteria are very closely related. So if you meet one, you almost certainly can meet the other. For purposes of brevity, I will, uh, simply incorporate by reference my prior comments with respect to the first criteria. And then just add that, uh, again, these lots are going to be enlarged to the extent they're changing. They'll be, uh, consistent in the size and character as the existing developed lots in the neighborhood. Uh, and they're all single-family uses that are proposed here. And granting the variances will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood in terms of both, you know, dimensional and, uh, use considerations.
All right. Any questions from the Board? All right. Please continue.
Number three, substantial justice is done by granting the variance, the variances, excuse me. Um, there's no public injury here if the variances are granted. There's no public gain if the variances are denied. So as this Board knows, this is the balancing test. Uh, and here really the loss to the applicant if the variances are denied are not outweighed by any harm to the public if they're granted. We propose that there are no harm. Uh, and additionally, under, uh, the Supreme Court case of Farrar v. Keen, the Court's held that the economics associated with a variance request are relevant to the substantial justice analysis. And really, the main reason here why it, Elizabeth Drive would be difficult to connect into a contiguous horseshoe pattern in terms of what the original 1969 subdivision plan contemplated is because in this area near the, uh, turnaround where the existing Elizabeth Drive stops is, it's, it's very harsh terrain. There's a lot of ledge down there. Uh, and it's really just not physically or economically feasible to construct the contiguous horseshoe roadway that was originally called for in the 1969 plan. Uh, but we think that doing it this way actually has more benefits to the public, more benefits to the neighborhood than the original proposal called for. And all the lots will have safe access. The turnaround area will be expanded. And again, these lots that are non-conforming lots of record, uh, to the extent they're changing, they're becoming less, with respect to area because they're becoming larger. Uh, so we propose that substantial justice is done.
So I do have a question. Um, so this was, as this was originally planned to be a horseshoe road. It sounds like, I guess, uh, when you talk about rocky ledge, is it just that it's, it's not feasible to build on, or it's cost prohibitive?
It becomes, well, a, a little both. I mean, it is kind of a Kevie Warner. I mean, there's, there's a case that talks about, you know, financial issues being a component of hardship. And in this case, to build that road today, maybe back in 69, you could have built it. It would have been less to do. But to build that road today just becomes an economically unviable method of trying to complete, uh, development of these grandfathered lots. And we think this is a better way to go anyway, based upon the current, uh, status of the engineering we've had done out of the site. I think that's the simplest way we can answer it. I mean, anything's possible, but it's, this, we just don't think economically it makes any sense. Nor do we think logically it makes any sense, based upon what we're trying to do, which is to kind of split the area, reduce competing traffic flow, and to allow, uh, increases in the size of these lots. So we think this is a better plan and a good idea.
I, I guess, uh, part of the reason I ask is because, um, I, I know that you talked about, um, a turnaround for emergency vehicles. Um, I'm just curious, uh, does, uh, steering away from a horseshoe road impact, uh, an emergency vehicle's ability to get to these properties in any way? Versus, um, if, assuming it weren't cross, uh, cost prohibitive, uh, would it be more beneficial to have it as a horseshoe for the purposes of emergency vehicles?
I, I don't, because I believe that based upon our cul-de-sac, which meets the town standards, by putting the, uh, Hammerhead in, which is a great improvement over what is there now, allowing things to turn around. This, this works quite nicely. Uh, again, this has to go to the Planning Board for further review. I'm sure they'll be taking another look at it. But based upon our engineers' work, H. Nordstrom working on this, we believe that this is, this is a safe and effective way to deal with the issues that we're discussing here this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, does anyone on the Board have any questions?
Uh, I, I actually do, and I, I know I'm going to have this question for, uh, substantial justice. And I know I'm going to have the, I have issue with, and, and I'm going to be jumping ahead, but I have issue with four and five as it relates to, uh, Lot 13, Lot 14, and Lot 15. The substantial justice, I, I can just with The substantial justice, I can understand with and square footage of the lot as one thing, but frontage, I mean, we're going to, required is 200, and we're talking about Lot 15 is going to have, what, a quarter, not even a quarter of that, you know, 25 feet? That's, that's, I mean, when you're talking about substantial, I mean, substantial justice, you're talking about, you know, and I haven't even gotten to the other two yet, diminished values and hardship, but I don't, I don't, those three lots, I don't like the way that the, that frontage is there. I don't think, I think that will impact, and again, I'm jumping ahead, I think that's going to impact, you know, it could impact values as far as diminished value. I don't know if that's necessarily the best for the characteristic of the neighborhood to have frontages that small, given where the frontages are of the other properties. But that's just my take on that, on that, and I'm probably going to be raising the same concern that I, you know, for unnecessary hardship as well as is diminished value.
If I could respond, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Well, I think we've got to go back to the purpose of frontage. And the Supreme Court, as I referred to earlier, has spoken on this in the Metzger case. They said frontage is used ordinarily to prevent overcrowding. That's, that's the basic idea, so that you have lots that are separated sufficiently so that you don't have overcrowding. I would point out that if you take a look at a cluster subdivision that's allowed in Merrimack, you can have little or no frontage, and those work quite well. So be careful in interpreting frontage as somehow this grand thing that is needed for safe and effective access. All you really need to get in and out of a house is a driveway. And we believe that this is, this is more than, that the frontages we're proposing are more than effective, especially consistently, in fact, not only are we not overcrowding, we're actually increasing the size of all of these lots. The final thing I'll point out, interestingly enough, if you take a look at the Merrimack ordinance, take a look at the industrial zone, you don't even need any frontage in the industrial zone. That's kind of funny considering that you might have big trucks, tractor trailers, and other much larger vehicles consistently using the site. What you need is safe, effective, and legal access, that's all you need. So I would point out that this is a, remember, this is an existing subdivision. This isn't us coming before the board and saying, oh gee whiz, oh golly, we'd like to create lots, create these lots, new lots, which these are not, the grandfathered lots of record, and guess what, we'd like these minimal frontages. You know, I can understand the board's thinking in that regard, but I think you have to be a little more expansive and take a look at the true meaning of this restriction. You've got to take a look, does the restriction need it to accomplish the goal? The restriction in this instance is not needed to accomplish the goal of overcrowding and squeezing things together. It's not needed. The lots are large, large in relation to the lots out there. I say the area that we're looking at. So I, you know, I appreciate the thought, but I would hope that the board doesn't get tied up in the number, okay, 50 feet, 25 feet, whatever. Because realistically, in terms of what we're proposing, it really doesn't make a difference and it doesn't impact the true spirit and intent of the ordinance. And when you look at substantial justice, it's a balancing test. You're taking a look, and you're saying, okay, does this truly affect the health, safety, and welfare of the community? It doesn't. It doesn't. These lots can be effectively and safely used. The driveways can intersect with public roads. We're improving the end of Elizabeth Drive. There's no reason why the proposal that we're bringing forward can't work and will work. The engineers have indicated it looks beautiful. And it allows us to keep the traffic on our side of the, on our side of the development, if you get my drift. I don't know what else to say about it. I recognize the board could be concerned, but I think in this instance, the concern is, shouldn't it really be a concern? We have good access, we've got enough frontage to make it work effectively, and on that, I'll stop talking. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, on to number four.
The values of surrounding properties will not be diminished. Again, these lots are becoming larger, so, you know, we could theoretically build them in their pre-existing nonconforming sort of vested status as smaller lots, as nine smaller lots, but we're taking nine smaller lots and making them eight bigger lots, and that means more open space for the neighborhood as a whole, which is good for surrounding property values. The proposal is superior to the horseshoe connection as originally proposed by the original subdivision, again, as Attorney Michael said, because it maintains the existing traffic patterns on Elizabeth Drive and keeps new traffic onto that new Charles Road extension. Only one lot would be using Elizabeth Drive for access, that's Lot 15. All the other lots will use that new Charles Road extension, which is not a through road, so again, we're not talking about traffic coming in off of other areas either. It's going to have a nice cul-de-sac at the end. So no circulation issues in terms of either other roads or in terms of the butters or the nearby property owners up on Elizabeth Drive.
Any questions from the board? Comments?
I already voiced my concern.
Okay. So unnecessary hardship?
Unnecessary hardship? We believe that these lots do suffer from an unnecessary hardship, and Attorney Michael has touched on some of the reasons sort of already, but I'd just like to highlight a few of them. The property does have special conditions, the property of lots as a whole, and each of them individually have special conditions that distinguish it from others in the area. First, they're vacant, pre-existing, nonconforming lots of record along a paper street, an unfinished subdivision, which is a relatively unique situation. Again, I've touched on the substantial presence of ledge and harsh terrain near the turnaround area, which make it very difficult to develop the road as a contiguous horseshoe as originally called for in 1969. Other lots in the area simply don't share these characteristics, and it really is when we talk about that harsh terrain and ledge and the unique hardship that's inherent in the topography of the land is really precisely the type of issue that is properly remedied by variances from this board, of course, is the relief valve in these circumstances. So owing to those special conditions, there's no fair and substantial relationship between the purpose of minimum frontage depth and lot size requirements and their application here. Again, the construction of new roads provides safe and adequate access. The turnaround will be expanded for the public benefit in terms of emergency vehicular access and turnaround movements, and the lots that are subject to lot line adjustments will all become less nonconforming than they currently are with respect to area. So really, we're bringing them closer into compliance with the zoning ordinance than we would be if we just went ahead and built them out in their existing grandfathered status.
And I'd like to add one thing to that if I could. I kind of raised the issue in Hennecker Garrison v. Hennecker State case earlier, and I'd like to read one part of it. This is a quote from the case, this is not me talking. "Unnecessary hardship requires a determination of whether the zoning restriction is applied to this particular application interferes with a landlord's reasonable use of the property." That's what the court said. "This factor includes consideration of the landowner's ability to receive a favorable return on his or her investment. Expert testimony is not required." I think we can all, I don't think you need to be an expert to understand that if we can't build out our subdivision, there's a significant economic loss associated with it. We believe that by constructing this in the manner that we're showing, we believe that to complete Elizabeth Drive would require blasting, it would require retaining walls, it just doesn't work. And I think the Hennecker case is illustrative of the fact that hardship can include a financial component, and clearly, that's the case here. I made it clear earlier, but I just want to make it clear again that that in and of itself is sometimes sufficient to find hardship in cases like this, especially when we're dealing with lots that were previously approved by this town. Thank you.
So to just wrap up the last part of the hardship criteria, the proposed use is reasonable. This one's straightforward. The proposed use, single-family use permitted in the zone, permitted on all the lots, and the Supreme Court has held that permitted uses are per se reasonable. With that, we would turn it back over to the board, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments regarding unnecessary hardship?
No.
All right. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to open up the public portion of this, and I will be doing so once to go over all the variances. I believe that's approved, right, Casey? So we're just going to go down the line and vote them all one at a time? We only need to open the public piece once?
Yeah, just once is fine.
Okay, thank you. So at the bottom of your screen, you should see a telephone number that you can dial.
Hey, Rich?
Yes.
There's a letter I think you need to read in.
You are right, actually. I was going to, since it's, because of the nature of the letter, I was going to read it in when I opened that portion.
Okay, sorry about that. I apologize.
No problem. So if you, if anybody who's looking to speak for or against is looking to communicate that to us, please dial the number on your screen. What I'm going to do is first ask for anyone that's looking to speak in favor. Once I do that, anyone that is, please press star nine at that point. That will indicate to me that you're looking to speak in favor of these variances. Anyone who's looking to speak against these variances, when I call that, please press star nine at that point, and that way I'll know that you're looking to speak against. So at this point, anyone who has called in, if you're looking to speak in favor of these variances, if you could go ahead and press star nine now. All right, I don't see any movement. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to read in a letter from an butter that is looking to speak against, and then I will go ahead and ask that anyone that's looking to speak against to dial star nine. So the letter reads, "Dear Mr. Chairman, my name is John Soder. I live at 9 Elizabeth Drive in Merrimack, New Hampshire. I'm writing about ZBA cases 2020-11, 2020-12, and 2020-13, which are on the agenda for August 26, 2020, as items five, six, and seven. I have special concern about these cases because the lots are near my home, which is at TaxMap 3A Lot 17. I am writing because I may be unable to participate in the August 26 meeting in person. The Normandy Estates subdivision was laid out in 1969, when the only requirements on lots were 40,000 square feet and 150 feet of frontage. Since then, nine homes have been built on Elizabeth Drive, leaving eight lots unbuilt on Elizabeth Drive and one unbuilt on Squires Drive. Because of the frontage requirements, these homes are well-spaced, and the result is a nice neighborhood. Building houses on the nine unbuilt lots would not change the character of the neighborhood. Three lots referenced in cases 2020-13, 2020-12, and 2020-11 are adjacent lots, 3A-15 on Squires Drive, 3A-14 on corner of Squires Drive and Elizabeth Drive, and 3A-13 further along Elizabeth Drive. The case, the case is asked to reduce the frontage of 3A-15 to 25 feet, 3A-14 to 59.19 feet, and 3A-13 to 50 feet. The reduction of the frontage of 3A-15 to 25 feet means that the frontage of 3A-14 would start 25 feet from the end of Squires Drive instead of the current 150 feet. Lot 3A-14 would then have its 59.19 feet of frontage entirely on Squires Drive, and the 50 feet of frontage for Lot 3A-13 would also be on Squires Drive. The result is three adjacent lots with less than 150 feet of frontage between them, tripling the density of houses permitted in the section of Normandy Estates. Allowing three homes to be built where currently only one is permitted directly across Squires Drive from my home diminishes the value of my property by moving it from a neighborhood of low-density housing to one of high-density housing. I ask the zoning board of adjustments to reject these three cases for this reason." Also on August 26 is, agenda is case ZBA 2020-16, item 10. I may need to read this in more than once if this is... Okay, no, same one. Just making sure. Also on August 26, agenda is case ZBA 2020-16, item 10, which states that adjustments to lot lines should result in lots which conform to current zoning requirements, but ask for an exception for lot line changes which results in the lots becoming less nonconforming. However, that is not the case for lots 3A-13, 3A-14, and 3A-15, which will become more nonconforming since they each currently have 150 feet or more of frontage. I therefore ask the zoning board of adjustment to reject this case also for lots 3A-13, 3A-14, and 3A-15. It may be argued that due to the slope of the property, it cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of the property. I respond that it is not possible to improve the current slope to conform to town requirements, though it might be expensive. However, if the slope is not improved and the property owner chooses to build homes on the lots as they currently, as they are currently laid out, I will permit the town of Merrimack to install a heavy-duty electric winch on my property using electricity from my home to power the winch, so town trucks can be hauled out of Elizabeth Drive if they get stuck. I would not charge the town any fee to occupy my property or use my electricity. I feel the winch will be less harmful to the value of my property than three homes directly across Squires Drive from it. I ask that my comments be included in the public record of the August 26, 2020 meeting of the zoning board of adjustment. I also ask that my comments be read aloud during the public comment portions of the meeting related to the cases cited. Thank you, John Soder." So if you, I'd give you these, this opportunity to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first thing, the lots are there, the grandfathered lots. We're not increasing density. Suggest that we're taking a low-density plan and making it a high-density plan flies in the face of the plan. We're reducing it by a lot. I mean, we've got nine lots out there, we're planning to use eight of those lots. The frontage has very little to do with the density. The frontage has very little to do with impact. The frontage is only there to allow cars and vehicles access in and out of these parcels, which, which will become more conforming in size, not less conforming, more conforming in size. The only issue, the only issue are these driveways and the frontage that we've discussed, and we've made it very clear what our position is on those. They're safe, they're effective, it does not result in overcrowding in this area. I would also like to say that, I think that the letter points out one thing that validates what we've been talking about. He's prepared to install a winch to pull out town trucks? That just goes to show you the problem down there that we're prepared to fix. So with all due respect to his comments, I mean, I hear them, I listen to them. We're not increasing density. We're making the lots larger, we're going to improve the turnaround, and we're not running traffic except for one house, Lot 15, anywhere near him. And by the way, the frontage that we're using on lots, he mentioned lots 13 and 14, 14, as Brett pointed out, has a bunch of frontage. We're not really using that. We're going to be accessing a new roadway area heading out toward the Charles Road extension. We're not going to be using frontage up near Mr. Soder. We're going to be using the frontage, a small amount of that frontage, to access the extension that we built to create the frontage to allow our houses to be safely built. So with all due respect, I hear what he's saying, I respect what he's saying, I always respect what the butters say, but frankly, it just doesn't fit the facts that we're bringing forward to the board this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So at this point in time, for those that have dialed in, to speak against, if you could, press star nine to indicate that you're looking to speak against any of these variances. That way I can be aware of who's looking to speak against. I don't see anyone dialed in that has pressed star nine, so at this point in time, I will close the public portion of this hearing and...
Rich, it looks like there is someone raising their hand.
Oh, I apologize, I did not see that before, okay?
Yeah, it just popped up.
All right. I will go ahead and unmute the caller. When I do, I will need you to state your name and your address for our record, and then I will... When I do, I will need you to state your name and your address for our record, and then I will swear you in. Alright, it's not unmuting. Alright.
I was trying to unmute them as well, and I can't do that.
Oh, oh, they seem to be unmuted.
Okay, they're unmuted. Caller, if I could just have you state your name, your full name and your address, and I will swear you in.
Mr. Chairman, my name is John Sauter, and my address is 9 Elizabeth Drive in Merrimack, New Hampshire.
Excellent. And although I cannot see you, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do swear, and my hand is raised.
Alright, thank you so much. And thank you again for the letter, and please feel free to state what you're looking to state.
I just wanted to add one item based on what was stated earlier in the meeting. If the Normandy Estates is constructed as originally designed with a horseshoe for Elizabeth Drive, that provides better access to emergency vehicles, because if there's a fire, for example, on Elizabeth Drive, emergency vehicles can reach that from two different directions. Whereas the plan being contemplated tonight has two dead-end streets in place of the loop.
Okay. Alright, was there anything that you were looking to state before I hand this back over?
No, thank you.
Thank you. And if you guys would like to respond?
Very, very, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the abutters' remarks. If we don't come in and do anything, nothing's going to be done there. Let's, let's just start there. This remains as it is. I don't believe the town is going to come in and do anything in that area. We're the ones proposing creating a safer turnaround for the existing, I use the word existing Elizabeth Drive. As the other portion, which is the Charles Road extension, we're calling it, it could be part of Elizabeth Drive. We're gonna put in a cul-de-sac that meets town standards to allow for safe ingress and egress of emergency vehicles that conforms to town standards. So I recognize that there's a bifurcated process, this wasn't built on our lots, but we are planning to do our best to improve the situation all over the way around and be allowed to use the lots that have been approved in our grant. And again, we're increasing the size of those lots. So again, thank you for the opportunity to speak to that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much for that. Is there anybody else that is looking to speak against these variances? If you could, please press star nine to indicate that you are looking to do so. Alright, at this point, I will go ahead and close the public portion. And what I will be looking for is sequentially for, for motions from each of these. So for item number four?
Rich, are you looking for discussion or motion?
Either or. I will entertain either.
Well, I'm seeing that, I'm hearing nothing, I will give you a motion.
Thank you.
Item number four, RLC Realty LLC Petitioner Owner. I think they should be granted variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot following a lot line adjustment with 42,996 square feet of lot area, whereas 80,000 square feet is required, and 186.77 feet of depth, whereas 200 feet is required. The parcel is located at 21 Elizabeth Drive in the R2 Residential District, Tax Map 3A Lot 010. Case number ZBA 2020-10. And with the condition that the planning board has approval of the lot line adjustment.
So it looks like there are also conditions for the zoning board.
Okay, and that, and also under the condition upon receipt of variance in cases 2020-11, 2020-12, 13, 14, and 15.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion was made in favor of granting the variance by Kathy, seconded by Rodney. Kathy, are you in favor?
I am.
Rodney, are you in favor?
I am.
Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
Patrick, are you in favor?
Yes.
I as well, I'm in favor. So this motion will pass 5-0-0. I'm now looking for a motion for item five.
I make a motion that we accept RCL Realty LLC Petitioner Owner variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot following a lot line adjustment with 41,268 square feet of lot area, whereas 80,000 square feet is required, 182.89 feet of depth, whereas 200 feet is required, and 50 feet of frontage, whereas 200 feet is required. Parcel is located at 15 Elizabeth Drive in the R2 Residential District, Tax Map 3A Lot 13. Case number ZBA 2020-11. The conditions from the planning board?
Okay, and if you could also state the condition that the addition, the other cases are granted, that should be...
Where they find that?
On my side, it is in my cheat sheet. On your side, it should be in the... On there? Okay, so I'll go ahead, if that's not on there, I'll go ahead and read it in. So the condition here is that the board would also have to grant variances 20-2020-12, 2020-13, 2020-14, and 2020-15. So a motion to grant was made by Rodney. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Kathy. Rodney, are you in favor?
Yes.
Kathy, are you in favor?
Yes.
Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
Patrick, are you in favor?
Abstain.
Abstain. I am in favor. So item number five is 4-0-1. Item number six, I am looking for a motion.
I make a motion that we grant RCL Realty LLC Petitioner Owner variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot following a lot line adjustment with 50,174 square feet of lot area, whereas 80,000 square feet is required, 155.68 feet of depth, whereas 200 feet is required, and 59.19 feet of frontage, whereas 200 feet is required. The parcel is located at 11 Elizabeth Drive in the R2 Residential District, Tax Map 3A Lot 14. Case number ZBA 2020-12. The conditions that is in agreement with the planning board.
And also that the variances are also granted 2020-13, 2020-14, and 2020-15.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion to grant made by Rodney, seconded by Kathy. Rodney, are you in favor?
Yes.
Kathy, are you in favor?
Yes.
Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
Patrick, are you in favor?
Abstain.
And I am in favor. So item six passes 4-0-1. Item number seven?
I'll go with the motion, RLC Realty LLC Petitioner Owner be granted variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot following a lot line adjustment with 49,524 square feet of lot area, whereas 80,000 square feet is required, and 25 feet of frontage, whereas 200 feet is required. The parcel is located at 4 Squires Drive in the R2 Residential District, map, Tax Map 3A Lot 015. Case number ZBWA 2020-13, with the condition that the, upon the, with the condition upon receipt of the variance of cases 2020-14 and 2020-15, and the planning board approval for the lot line adjustment.
Five seconds.
Okay, a motion made by Kathy, seconded by Rod. Kathy, are you in favor?
I am.
Rod, are you in favor?
I am.
Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
Patrick, are you in favor?
No.
Okay, and I am in favor. This motion passes 4-1-0. Item number eight?
I'd like to make a motion to approve RCL Realty LLC Petitioner Owner variance under 3, Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot following a lot line adjustment with 48,258 square feet of lot, whereas 100,000 square feet is required, and 185 feet of depth, whereas 300 feet is required. The parcel is located at 14 Elizabeth Drive in the R1 Residential by Soils, District Tax Map 3A Lot 025, Case Number ZBA 2020-14, and citing the aforementioned conditions for the other petitions related to this.
Second.
Alright, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Alright, I lost my headset. So a motion was made by Patrick and seconded by Kathy?
Yes.
Okay. Patrick, are you in favor?
Yes.
Kathy, are you in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Rodney, are you in favor?
Yes.
Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. So that item passes eight, I'm sorry, 5-0-0. Now it's item eight. So now I'm looking for the last one, item nine.
Motion to approve RCL Realty LLC Petitioner Owner variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit the lot following a lot line adjustment with 61,913 square feet of lot, whereas 100,000 square feet is required, 185 feet of depth, whereas 300 feet is required. The parcel is located 18 Elizabeth Drive, the R1 Residential by Soils District, Tax Map 3A Lot 026, Case Number ZBA 2020-15, citing the same criteria as the previous, or as the related variances.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Patrick, seconded by Rodney. Patrick, are you in favor?
Yes, I am.
Rodney, are you in favor?
Yes.
Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
Kathy, are you in favor?
Yes.
And I am in favor. So this passes 5-0-0. Since that concludes the variances, the only thing I would mention, of course, is that anyone can appeal this decision. So if you start work on this in the next 30 days, you do so at your own risk. Now, with that being said, item number 10, the appeal of administration, administrative decision. I assume that you're looking to withdraw that?
That'll be withdrawn without prejudice on September 26th, 2020. I want to get through the 30-day appeal period, Mr. Chairman, so we can mark it to be withdrawn without prejudice on September 26th, 2020.
So with that being said, that means we would need to continue it, correct?
Yes, yes, we would.
Do I hear a motion to continue item 10?
Motion to continue item 10? Do you want me to read it in?
I believe you have to.
Okay. Motion to continue RCL Realty LLC appeal of administrative decision that determined pre-existing non-conforming lots of record are required to conform to current zoning requirements upon the modification of the lot, of the lot following a lot line adjustment, even though such adjustments would result in each lot becoming less non-conforming than presently constituted. The parcels are located at Elizabeth Drive, Charles Road, Squires Road, and the R1 Residential by Soils, and R2 Residential District's Tax Map 3A Lots 10, 13, 14, 15, 25, and 26, Case Number ZBA 2020-16. And that would be a continuance.
Till the next meeting, I guess, Mr. Chairman, 30th of September. I got the date wrong.
It's okay.
The number's fine.
I second that continuance? Okay, so the motion was made by Patrick, it's seconded by Rodney. Patrick, are you in favor of the continuance? Patrick? In favor? Rodney, are you in favor?
Yes.
Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
Kathy, are you in favor?
Yes.
I as well am in favor. So I didn't hear the audio, but Patrick did nod his head when I asked. So item number 10 will be continued to the September meeting.
Sorry about that, I hit the mute button on my mic.
Mr. Chairman, I'd appreciate the date and time stated for the record for the continuance, please.
Absolutely. So the continuance will be made until the September 30th, 2020, meeting at 7:00 PM, which will also be a Zoom meeting.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Alright, we are now on to item 11. As Life Goes On LLC Petitioner and Laura Benson Owner Appeal of Administrative Decision that determine an assisted living group home is not exempt from the three-acre minimum lot area requirement of Section 2.02.9b6 of the zoning ordinance. The parcel is located at 585 Daniel Webster Highway in the C1 Limited Commercial and R4 Residential, Aquifer Conservation and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts, Tax Map 6D-1 Lot 046, Case ZBA 2020-23. This item was continued from the July 29th, 2020, meeting. So I'm just taking a look here.
May I speak, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, we're not quite at the 30 days. I request the same relief. Continue this to the September 30th, 2020, meeting at 7 o'clock, please, because we're not past the 30 days yet.
Are you referring to the As Life Goes On petition?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So with that being said, do I hear a motion to continue this?
I'll make a motion to continue As Life Goes On LLC Petitioner and Laura Benson Owner Appeal of Administrative Decision that determine an assisted living group home is not exempt from the three-acre minimum lot area requirement of Section 2.02.9b6 of the zoning ordinance. The parcel is located at 585 Daniel Webster Highway in the C1 Limited Commercial and R4 Residential, Aquifer Conservation and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts, Tax Map 6D-1 Lot 46, Case Number ZBA 2020-23.
Second.
Motion made to continue from Rodney, seconded by Patrick. Rodney, are you in favor?
Yes.
Patrick, are you in favor?
Yes.
Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
Kathy, are you in favor?
Yes.
I as well am in favor. So we will be continuing this as well to the September 30th, meeting at 7:00 PM, which will also be done via Zoom.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Thank you. We are now up to item number 12. Brian Labrie Petitioner and BHL Real Estate Holdings LLC Owner variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a garage five feet from the side property line, whereas 20 feet is required. Parcel is located at 660 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial, Aquifer Conservation and Well Health Protection Districts, Tax Map 6E-2, Lot 014, Case 2020-25. I ask that each person who is speaking for this petition, please state your name, and I will swear you in after you have all stated your name.
Good evening, my name is Ken Clinton with Meridian Land Services, on behalf of BHL Real Estate Holdings.
Okay. Is there anyone else who will be speaking with you tonight?
I don't believe so.
Okay. If you could please raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you so much. So tell us about your... Thank you so much, uh, so tell us about your petition.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Um, as I indicated, uh, I'm presenting on behalf of Brian Labby from B H L Real Estate Holdings. As well as, uh, one of my coworkers, Doug Broder, who, uh, was double booked, so to speak, tonight. So, uh, I'm in, standing in his place. Um, I've reviewed all of the application materials. And would like to share my screen, if that's okay with you, to bring up the plan we submitted for this application.
Please feel free.
So he- here's the plan of the property, uh, if you're familiar with it, it, uh, is operating as, uh, Brian Labrie's landscaping. Business in the northeast corner of town, um, number six sixty Daniel Webster Highway or tax map lot sixty. Two dash fourteen. Uh, it's situated in between Daniel Webster Highway along its frontage. As well as the F E of return pike, uh, to the rear of the property. It's also sandwiched between a couple of other properties that are also located in the general commercial zone. On the west side, we have the Petro Home Services Facility. Uh, they are oil delivery and H V A C related plumbing related home services. And on the eastly side of the property is A B Septic. Uh, they provide septic services, installation, pumping, uh, inspections and a design if I'm not mistaken. So, uh, commercial area, yeah, fairly small lots. Um, in this particular case, the, um, Labrie lot is about six tenths of an acre in, in size. And the frontage along Daniel Webster Highway is about one hundred and eighteen feet. Uh, where the back is roughly a hundred and twenty-five feet. Um, purpose for tonight is we're seeking the dimensional relief of the side setback. And I'll zoom into this area here. Um, what Brian would like to accomplish is simply to have a detached garage. To store two of his trucks, um, especially in, in particularly in the winter months. Uh, so he can keep them out of the weather as well as, um, keep them, uh, from freezing. And so this would help him in his business, uh, for winter maintenance and what have you. So the, the purpose is specifically for a proposed garage detached. Um, we note in the application that it's five feet from the property line. Uh, the foundation on this particular exhibit is six feet. Um, however, we accommodated for some roof overhang, uh, so that it could be as close as five feet, uh, with that overhang itself. With our submission, we had a fairly lengthy narrative dated August fifth that's in the file, uh, answering the five prongs. Um, I'd like to drill down if I may and, uh, just hit those, um, in more of a bullet point statement fashion. So it's easier for the board to understand, digest the justification for this. Um, so I'm gonna go through the five prongs now.
While you're doing that, if you could just stop after each one in case we have questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, one, the variance is not contrary to the public interest. Uh, in this case, the reduction of the site setback for the garage under these circumstances does not conflict with the purpose of the ordinance. Which is to promote the health, safety, convenience, engine, welfare of the town of Merrimack. Uh, the town wide as a whole, uh, really has no concern or, or issue or impact from this particular garage location. Uh, relative to the property line. Uh, it certainly does not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, given the nature and operation of the area businesses. Again, these, these are fairly small lots and substantially occupied by improvements on each side. Uh, the A B building is a former residence. Substantial amount of pavement on their property with sheds that are themselves fairly close to the same lot line that we're, uh, focusing on today. Um, on the opposite side, once again, the Petro Home. Facility pavement right up to the property line with other facilities and improvements and storage right up to the property line. So this, um, proposed garage is very consistent with that. And further, it's, it's consistent with the site plan that was approved back in two thousand eleven. Which called for a series of, uh, sand storage bins or other material storage bins like the one that we show here. Which is the only one that's been constructed. Um, as well as there was a couple of storage containers, more of those like, um, metal storage bins, if you will. Had been proposed in this location as well. So it's consistent with how the site plan was approved in the past, just a different type of storage facility. Um, it does not threaten the public health, safety or welfare. Rather, it actually by including, uh, the two trucks, it's probably, um, promoting the same. Uh, it prevents any, uh, vehicle drippings, whether it's, uh, s- sands that's used for road maintenance. Or any other, uh, facilities that are, you know, attached to or involving the trucks. So it's actually probably improving in those aspects. And it certainly doesn't injure public rights. Um, the public themselves, as they travel along Daniel Webster Highway. Uh, will actually see quite a mature growth of, uh, coniferous trees here. That, that completely blocked between the, um, office building of Labrie Landscaping and the office building house of A B Septic. Uh, you simply cannot see through the, um, separation of these two buildings into the back. So quite frankly, the public would not even be aware of its existence. That, those are my comments relative to the, um, public interest, I'll pause there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do, any questions or comments from the board?
Okay, uh, proceeding on to the spirit of the ordinance being observed, uh, once again, as the, uh, prior application presenter. So, uh, noted, this particular item is extremely closely, if not directly related to the, uh, contrary to the public interest which we just went over. I will also add that because of the purpose and intent of the ordinance is protected. Um, in, in Lehman's terms, the primary. Point, if you will, of the side setback is to protect in the butter from an adverse impact. Um, we actually consider the garage to be an improvement and not an impact. As it will shield and hide any unsightly features of a, of a work truck within a brand new garage. Um, it will protect those trucks inside as opposed to outside, which they could possibly be stored in that exact location. So quite frankly, we do believe that the spirit of the ordinance is observed. I'll pause there.
Alright, thank you. Um, any questions or comments from the board? Alright, please continue.
Thank you. Uh, thirdly, we believe substantial justice is done as the benefit of the pa- applicant to utilize the property in a more effective way. Is not outweighed by potential harm to the public. As we can foresee, there is any potential for public harm. Uh, especially with the primary reason being the view, uh, observing a structure that appears to be close to the line. It's not observable from, from the public standpoint, uh, primarily from A B Septic, which I'll, uh, talk about in the next prong.
Alright. Any questions or comments from the board?
Fourthly, the values of the surrounding properties are not diminished. As I indicated, the, the property to the west Petro. Um, they're substantially distant from the property line and the setback in question. Yeah, furthermore, there's a fence that, uh, buffers visually along their common boundary with the Labrie property. And so they will not see or be affected in any fashion as far as we can tell. So their, their property certainly wouldn't be diminished. The easterly property, again, this is the A B Septic property. Um, you could argue that they'll, they're the most impacted by it. There is a section of fence along here as well. However, uh, I'll call your attention to a letter that was received by A B Septic, which was included with the application. And they clearly say that they have no objection to the application and the garage being placed within five feet of the, of the common property line. Um, that was dated July fourteenth, twenty twenty and included in our application package. So clearly, as occupiers and owners of that adjacent property, they don't consider that they have any issues and certainly wouldn't be diminishing their property. Further, the three lots, when you consider them as a whole in a, as a neighborhood sense. Uh, again, everything as far as the use goes, the intensity, the types of materials being stored, trucks, et cetera. It's all in common, it's, uh, very similar, it's, it's actually resulting in a consistency of appearance. Which does not have any adverse effect on others' property values. And quite frankly, as I suggested before, one could argue that, uh, the proposed garage in this location. Um, enclosing trucks that could be stored there anyways, um, is actually, uh, an improvement of the visual aspects. And could be considered an attribute and increasing property values as opposed to diminishing. Pause there.
Any questions or comments from the board?
And lastly, relative to unnecessary hardship, we, uh, feel little enforcement of the ordinance would not, would result in unnecessary hardship. Um, primarily because of the size, width and other zoning restrictions on this formerly residential lot. Uh, the twenty-five, the twenty-foot side setback, as applied to the special conditions of the property. Does not serve the public in a fair and substantial way, uh, relative to the purpose. Again, um, the nature of these lots, their use as the residential uses have changed and transitioned over years. To commercial uses, um, in this particular case, the ranch house. Uh, is converted into the office structure, again, next door, A B Septic is run out of that, uh, facility and that structure. Um, so the way the properties have been used and transitioned over the period of time. Um, would be an unnecessary hardship if they didn't have this opportunity. Uh, one of the key factors is the truck turning radius. Um, because there's a landscape vehicle or vehicle pulling a trailer. We need a substantial enough room to turn that around inside the property. Uh, his business has been established there since two thousand eleven and very prosperous. And so, uh, this particular use is, uh, needed in this location. It's really comes down to the special conditions of the property in relation to the previously included site plan. Which caused the proposed garage location not only to be reasonable, but also to be consistent with the essential character of the neighborhood. Uh, and I'll stop there and I'll have, uh, nothing further unless there's questions from the board.
Alright. Any questions or comments from the board on unnecessary hardship?
No.
Alright, so, uh, with that being said, um, thank you for your presentation. Um, it sounds like there's no questions or comments, so what I'll go ahead and do now is, is open this up to the, the public portion. Um, so what I would like, anyone who's looking to speak either in favor or against to do is to call the number. That you see at the bottom of the screen. And, um, if you're looking to speak in favor of this petition. Uh, please dial star nine so that I can see that you're looking to speak in favor of the petition. Alright, anyone is looking to speak against this petition. Please do the same, dial star nine to indicate to me that you're looking to speak against the petition.
Richard may need to read that re- uh, letter in, just for.
I do not have the letter in my packet.
Oh. I do.
If you have the letter, if you, I, I did not realize you guys had letter, did not appear in mine. So if you could please, uh, read it for me, Patrick, I would appreciate it.
Uh, so this letter is in favor, um, says, um, dated July fourteenth, two twenty twenty. Town of Merrimack zoning, uh, and planning. To whom it may concern, let it be known as in the butter of six sixty Daniel Webster Highway, Merrimack, New Hampshire, zero three zero five four. I have no objection to the owner, B H L Real Estate Holdings, Brian Labrie. Building a garage within five feet of the property line, we share, we understand the need for the garage to be close to the property line. So trucks and trailer may, uh, turn around more easily. Thank you, Jerry Hill, six sixty-two Daniel Webster Highway, Merrimack, New Hampshire, zero three zero five four.
Thank you very much, Patrick. Um, so I, I do not have anyone looking to speak in favor or against the petition, so I'm closing, uh, the public piece, um.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, Brian Labrie petitioner and B H L Real Estate Holdings LLC owner. Variance under section three point zero two of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a garage five feet from the side property. Line whereas twenty feet is required, the parcels located at six sixty Daniel Webster Highway. In the C two general commercial aquifer conservation and wellhead protection districts. Tax map six E dash two lot zero one, uh, zero one four. Case number Z B A twenty twenty twenty-five.
And, uh, if you could just, uh, state the, uh.
Oh geez, sorry about that, yeah. Uh, should the board approve, the petition meets variance, crime and staff recommends the approval. The petitioner shall obtain a site plan approval from the planning board for the proposed site modifications. Apologize.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Um, I heard Ben first, so I'll go with Ben. Um, so, uh, Patrick, uh, are you in favor?
Yes.
Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
Kathy, are you in favor?
Yes.
Rodney, are you in favor?
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well, so that brings us to five zero zero. Uh, the variance passes, um, however, as stated before, you do have thirty days, uh, where someone can appeal this. So if you start development before, then you do so at your own risk.
Understood, Mr. Chairman, and thank you very much to you and the board.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Before I move on to item number thirteen, uh, Casey, uh, are the special exception, the variance, uh. We, we would, we would do one or the other, correct?
Yes, so, um, I was going to explain what was going on with the special, with the variance on the application, item number thirteen. Uh, there was an error on our G I S map that showed, uh, the lot at one oh six Herrick Street. To be a split zoned lot, uh, one part being, um, in the I one district. And the other part being in the C two district, uh, and that turned out to be an error. So the application for a variance, uh, is completely moot. Uh, so you can move on, uh, to item number fourteen for the special exception.
Okay, so we do not need to hear item number thirteen?
Yep, uh, totally move, uh, that lot is not in the industrial district at all.
Okay, uh, so with that being said, um, is that something that needs to be withdrawn or do we simply not hear it?
Uh, just simply not hear it.
Okay, so with, with that being said, it sounds like, um, item number thirteen. Um, Ultimate Member Services petitioner and Sanco Realty Trust owner. Variance under section two point oh two point four, the zoning ordinance. To permit an automobile sales use in the I one industrial district. Parcels located at one oh six Herrick Street in the C two general commercial. Um, it states here I one industrial, but according to Casey, it is not an industrial.
Exactly.
Yep, and aquifer conservation districts, tax map three D dash two lot twenty-one case Z B A twenty twenty dash twenty-six. Um, will actually not be heard, uh, because it's not valid. So we'll move on to item number fourteen, Ultimate Member Services petitioner and Sanco Realty Trust owner. Uh, special exception under two point oh two point three. See one of the zoning ordinance to permit the sale or storage of used and new cars and automobile service and repair station. In the C two general commercial district, the parcel is located at one oh six Herrick Street. In the C two general commercial, I one industrial, however, that piece is also null as well, correct? It's not actually in the I one industrial?
Yeah, that, that, I'm sorry, uh, uh, that detail is incorrect, it is only the C two.
Okay. And, um, aquifer conservation districts, so it's tax map three D dash two lot twenty-one case Z B A twenty twenty dash twenty-seven. Um, and, uh, if I can just have anyone who is looking to speak, um, for this petition. Uh, please state your name for the record, and if you haven't been sworn in, I will go ahead and swear you in.
Jeff Cavane. Jeff Cavane.
We've been, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Michael again, brought out, we've been previously. Were involved in this petition along with Jeff Cavane of T F.
Okay, so what I'll do is, uh, uh, it looks like he's muting and unmuting.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
If you could please state your full name?
Sure, Jeff Cavane, I'm with T F Moran's office.
Okay, and if you could, uh, I can't see you, but if you could raise your right hand. And, uh, you, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth tonight?
I do.
Thank you so much. Alright. Uh, please feel free to, uh, talk to us about the special exception and walk us through the criteria.
Thank you, Attorney Michael again, uh, good evening. This is a interesting parcel of land. The man at one oh six Herrick Street. Lost the Daniel Webster Highway in the C two commercial. It's kind of an interesting parcel because it's this, there's a steep drop in that area, if you're familiar, I'm sure you are. Geography of Merrimack in that area, the D W highway, it's not a flat plain into that parcel. It's kind of a steep drop, Herrick Street kind of makes a sweeping turn to take care of the grades down into the area. I would point out that Herrick Street is, is a dead end street. This particular parcel, uh, is the first parcel that you hit on the left-hand side as you travel down Herrick Street. Approximately one point one five acres wide, so I think that one of the reasons. Hasn't been developed commercially is because it's not the type of location that most commercial businesses want. They wanna be right up the road, they wanna be clean, uh that type of thing, they want their signs kind of right up in place. This is a proposal for BMW dealership. And they intend to build a first class facility on this parcel. And you don't need to be flush to the law. BMW essentially is a destination business, not something you necessarily pull off in like a, like a convenience or a gas station. Type of thing that you seek them out and you go with your cars and repairs. I would point out at the outset, the interesting anomaly in their ordinance. Most car dealerships have a a place to repair and maintain the vehicles purchased. In Merrimack, interesting, repair uh is allowed in the industrial zone. But not, not in the uh C two zone. And interestingly enough, car sales aren't allowed in the industrial zone. They're allowed in the C two zone, special exception. We've got kind of a funky situation here, which is why we need the special exception, which is to allow uh the sales and repair vehicles in the C two zone. The C two zone is is under the ordinance, the preferred place, because again, what you need is a special exception. Technically, it's permitted use, something to do the special exception criteria. It's the only zone in Merrimack that allows car sales as a permitted use with a special exception. Everywhere on water and variance. So again, this proposal is to allow the sale of vehicles as long as they're repaired and maintenance, as with any other uh auto dealership like this. You think that uh building a first class facility in this area, this is the mixed use area, Brooklyn and the valley. Uh, is is really a fine use for this parcel, because this is a difficult piece to develop. Of the most commercial businesses, as I have pointed out. I would say that T F Moran did a nice job devising a plan, and they also did some generation. This really is a no traffic operation, and you're just gonna say, what did Michael just tell me? The weekday peak, the weekday peak A M, twenty eight movements. The weekday peak P M, thirty two movements. The weekend Saturday peak, twenty eight movements. This is, this is literally very minimal traffic, so if we had to put something there that was a first class commercial facility, which we believe is as low trip generations on and off D W highway and Herrick Street. This is certainly a fine uh thing to consider. I'd also point out that it's the first turn, when you get on Herrick Street, the first left turn is gonna be into our facility. The the balance of it when you pass us uh is where other things are are located on Herrick Street. So our traffic doesn't even really count much of Herrick Street. You can down command, you pull out and leave. Well, the impacts of this are very signi- uh very insignificant in that sense. And again, I know Brett will touch on it briefly, I don't wanna steal his thunder. We think the layout design and location for this particular use, which is a nice addition to the Merrimack commercial uses on the D W highway, uh should be allowed to approve. On that, I'm gonna turn the breath, I'll take you through the criteria under the ordinance. Thank you, Mister Chairman and members.
Thank you.
Thank you, good evening Chairman and members of the board again. Um, I'll start off with the first criteria. The specifics, the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use or uses in terms of overall community development. Uh, as again, as Attorney Michael said, this is located just off Daniel Webster Highway. Uh, we believe it complements what is really a mixed use area. Uh, but as mixed use as it is, there is actually another auto repair shop nearby, I think it's uh two properties to the north of this site. So between uh complementing the mixed use area and the fact that the site can support the proposed development in terms of its size and access. And the fact that it will be on town water and sewer, uh, we would propose that the specific site is appropriate location for the use in terms of community development.
All right, are there any questions or comments from the board? Please continue.
The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Uh, as Attorney Michael uh touched on, this pass through traffic is pretty unlikely. Most people driving by who see a BMW dealer servant aren't just gonna pop in to look around. It's really, it's really a targeted destination, people who, you know, either know it's there and they're going there for a specific reason. Or people who have done their research and have found that it's there and are going there for a specific reason. The the traffic effects are 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 negligible, almost zero. Uh, there won't be any excessive noise and really this is a quality, uh, as Attorney Michael said, first class. Low key, very low key commercial use of this property, which uh will not adversely affect the neighborhood.
I was just thinking about it being uh if it, if it is a right, I guess my thought was just it being a repair facility as well.
Uh, this, this would be similar to your, your higher class car facilities, Mercedes Benz, Lexus, those things. I mean, most of it is repairs of the cars that they sell to the clients that they have. It's not really, it's not an auto workshop where you drive in uh usually of your oil change. I'm not saying you couldn't, but basically, most of the people that frequent these types of facilities for repairs are customers with BMWs, for the most part, that statistically, that's what you usually find in a facility like this.
Okay, tha- that's what I was thinking, I just, I was processing that, um, that does anyone on the board have any questions or comments regarding that? Or or item number two, or item B? Alright, uh, please continue.
Number three, there'll be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Uh, the proposed driveway is the closest one to Danny Webster Highway in the neighborhood in terms of, uh, you know, when you get onto Herrick Street. So people leaving and the site and coming to the site won't really have a reason to pass by the other uses that are further north on Herrick Street. Um, there's no sidewalks on this portion of Herrick Street or on D W highways, so pedestrian, pedestrian traffic is 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 very low. Uh, probably close to zero. Um, there's sufficient distance between the intersection of D W highway and the proposed access. So, you know, between uh the the amount of distance between those two intersections and the fact that we've talked about, you know, almost negligible traffic. Uh, there's not gonna be any stacking issues or anything like that in terms of, you know, cars backing up. Uh, and I would just obviously point out that this is subject to site plan review uh by the planning board, who would further, uh, you know, ensure that um, none of these hazards will uh exist.
Any questions or comments from the board? Alright.
And lastly, adequate and appropriate facilities will provided for the proper operation of the proposed user uses. Again, this lot can support the proposal in terms of size and configuration, it'll be on municipal water and sewer. There's adequate space for the building, uh, for the parking spaces, for the access and traffic circulation around the building on the site. Uh, we don't need any offsite traffic improvements, again, because it's a target destination with negligible traffic impacts. Uh, and the repair facility, uh, that again, will be servicing mostly BMW customers. Since it's a BMW facility, will meet all local uh N D S regulations and standards. And with that, we would turn it back over to the board and get happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board regarding the special exception?
I, I mean, Mike, it's, I I I don't think it's the, I don't think there's sustainability to put it that a BMW dealership there, given there's one in Manchester, but that's a planning board thing. So, um, I I, but I mean, they they seem to, they answered all the questions on the criteria.
Right. So what I'll go ahead and do now is open up the public portion of uh the petition for tonight. So uh, for anyone that's looking to speak either in favor or against the special exception, uh, please dial the number at the bottom of your screen. Um, if you're looking to speak in favor of this petition, if you could just press star nine to indicate to me that you're looking to speak in favor. Alright, if you're looking to speak against this petition, now's the time to go ahead and dial star nine. Alright, I'll go ahead and close the public portion. I will entertain a motion or any cross discussion on this. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to uh approve the ultimate Beamer Services petitioner Sanco Realty Trust owner special exception under section two point oh two point three, C one of the zoning ordinance to permit the sale or storage of used and new cars in an automobile service and repair station in the C two general commercial district. Parcels located at one oh six Herrick Street in the C two general commercial. And Equifier Conservation District, tax map three D two lot O two one. Case number Z B A twenty twenty dash twenty seven.
If you could just also add in the uh, the staff recommendation?
Uh, it's subject to a planning board approval?
Uh, yeah, for proposed new and used car dealership and automotive service facility. Thank you, uh, motion made by Ben, do I hear a second? Ah, I'll, I'll go with Kathy this time, I, Kathy seconds. Um, Ben, are you in favor? Kathy, are you in favor? Rodney, are you in favor? Patrick? And I am as well in favor, so this passes five zero zero. And uh, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time tonight, we appreciate your assistance.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, take care. Alright, item number fifteen, PMG Northeast LLC petitioner owner variance under section seventeen point ten point three B of the zoning ordinance to permit the installation of a ground sign within two feet of the public right of way, whereas twenty feet is required. Parcels located at one Continental Boulevard in the C two general commercial and aquifer conservation districts. Tax map four D lot fifty four dash O one, case twenty twenty, or actually, I guess I should say case Z B A twenty twenty dash twenty eight. And if I could just have uh each person who will be speaking on this petition, uh, please state your name and I will swear you all in.
Uh, this is Jesse Coakley with Mazur Consulting, the engineer.
Okay. And my name's Courtney Hers, with she and Finney, attorneys for the project.
Thank you, uh, will anyone else be speaking tonight regarding the petition? Just you two?
Expect just to be asked, we have two folks from PMG on the line if there are questions, but other word.
Okay, so I I will swear them in separately if if need be, and if you guys could just please raise your right hand. And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Alright, thank you very much, uh, please go ahead and tell us about your variance.
So I'll just give a brief overview of the property. Um, it's located at one Continental Boulevard, actually the southwest corner of the intersection with Continental Boulevard and Camp Sergeant Road. Um, it's currently a gas station and and uh service station that is proposed for redeveloped. Uh, for a new gas station canopy and convenience store with a drive through. We do have conditional approval from the planning board. Um, and we did get a positive recommendation from the Conservation Commission. We're here tonight really for two minor variances uh associated with the proposed signage for the project. One with the ground sign, um, which is proposed to be two feet from the property line. Whereas twenty foot setback is required. Um, the existing freestanding sign is about three and a half feet from the property line. Um, being slightly relocated and adjusted to be better positioned perpendicular to Continental Boulevard and then also um, to avoid future um onsite utilities which are, which are needed as part of the appro- improvements. And then the new gas station canopy will be oriented perpendicular, or I should say parallel, excuse me, to Continental Boulevard. And due to the length of the canopy and the um gas brand standards, they have their logo on one end of the canopy and then the lettering of the gas station on the other end of the canopy. So that was, those are included in a signage exhibit that was submitted with uh our packet. I do have the ability to show that on the screen if you want, um, for the board's knowledge, but otherwise, um Miss Hers will go into the uh, the criteria, unless you have any questions.
Okay, yep, and if you could just please stop it at the end of each of the criteria, in case the board does have questions.
Certainly, thank you uh for your time tonight. We've submitted a detailed uh application addressing each of the criteria and Jesse's touched on a lot of the points uh that I'll touch on as well, but specifically I'll try to uh quickly touch on each of the points in in the order of the criteria. So first, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. As the board knows, to be contrary to the public interest or injurious to the public rights of others, a variance must unduly and a mark, and in a marked degree conflict with the ordinance such that it violates the ordinance's basic zoning objectives. Uh, and the courts look to whether granting the variance would alter the essential character of the neighborhood or whether granting the variance would threaten the public health, safety or welfare. And we submit that uh granting this variance would do neither. Uh, first, it would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. As as Jesse's explained, what the proposal is to replace an existing gasoline station and convenience store with a new gasoline station and convenience store. Similarly, the neighborhood is solidly commercial, uh, with Papa Gino's uh next door. Burger King across the street, you folks are familiar with with the intersection. Um, and finally, the, a decision to grant the variance would not threaten the public health, safety or welfare. And uh, again, as has already been mentioned, the proposed sign is located in very close to where the existing sign is, um, which has proven to not raise a threat to the public uh in any way.
Any questions or comments from the board? Please continue.
Thank you, uh, the second criteria, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed by granting the variance. Again, as the board knows, this criteria is closely related to the first uh that it be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance and looks to whether uh granting the variance would alter the essential character of the neighborhood and benefit the public health, safety and welfare. Uh, I would direct the board's attention to section seventeen point O one of the ordinance which provides that the purpose of this article is to encourage the effective use of signage to direct movement, advertise and inform the public while protecting public safety, preserving neighborhood character and minimizing visual clutter. The proposed location of the ground sign does exactly that. It ensures that drivers on both Camp Sergeant and Continental uh would be well informed with the location of the gasoline station and convenience store. And um, again, would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. I'll pause there.
Alright, thank you, any questions or comments from the board? Alright, thank you.
The third criteria, granting the variance would do substantial justice. Here, of course, we look to whether without the variance, the applicant would suffer a loss that is not outweighed by a gain to the general public. And here it's appropriate to consider whether the proposed use is consistent with the present use, which of course, as we've discussed, it is. Also, in this case, the public would not enjoy any significant gain if this variance were to be denied. In fact, signage set further back from the roads would, we believe, result in a less clearly marked gasoline station and convenience store which in fact would run counter to the purpose of the ordinance.
Any questions or comments from the board? Thank you.
Fourth, the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished if the variance is granted. Uh, for many of the reasons we've already discussed, primarily that we are proposing a replacement gasoline station and convenience store on a site that already houses that sort of use. Um, and this proposed variance again is, is seeking uh variance for location of a sign in, in very close to the location where the current sign is. We submit that the requested variance would not have any impact on the value of surrounding lots.
Alright, any questions or comments from the board? Alright, thank you.
And finally, with regard to unnecessary hardship, we would submit that actually this proposed variance would meet either prong A or B. Uh, under prong A, we'd submit that no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to this property. Uh, which in this case has a lot to do with the location of this particular property at the corner of Continental and Camp Sergeant. Again, as we've already discussed, the purpose of the provision has to do with directing movement, advertising, and informing the public while protecting safety, preserving neighborhood character, and minimizing visual clutter. Again, the proposed sign location near the corner of these two busy roads actually better serves the purpose of the ordinance than would a sign that was set back twenty feet from the roads. A sign that was constructed in accordance with, with that setback would actually leave the public less informed about the location of the gasoline station and convenience store, because it would be more difficult to see. Would you like me to finish the rest of the unnecessary hardship or pause?
No, I was gonna say you, you can, you can go on to number two.
Okay, alright, and we submit that the proposed use is reasonable uh because it makes the most effective use of the site's location at this busy corner as the sign is currently at the property, the sign currently at the property is located in roughly the same location and it's demonstrated this location makes the best use of the space. And finally, we, we submit that it, this uh paragraph B of the unnecessary hardship uh criteria is also met here. Again, due to the size and location of the property, compliance with the ordinance provision would require the ground sign to be set back so far from the roads, the utility of the site would be greatly diminished uh if it were enforced uh enforced literally here.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions from the board regarding this petition at all?
Seems pretty straightforward. I mean, it's just one gas station for another. I don't think anyone's gonna not mistake it for a gas station, you know, but.
Yeah, plus, yeah, I, I, the only thing I was thinking was literal enforcement of the ordinance in this case would plant the sign pretty deep in. So it um, I, I, I think unnecessary, I think the unnecessary hardship piece is, is pretty clearly defined here.
Yeah.
So uh, with that being said, uh what I'd like to do now is to open this to the, to the public. And um. If you could, anyone who's looking to speak either in favor or against this petition, to please dial in the number that's at the bottom of the screen. And anyone that's looking to speak in favor of this petition, please dial star nine now. Alright, anyone that's looking to speak against this petition, uh please dial star nine now. Alright, doesn't look like we have anyone that looks to speak on this petition, so um. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve PMG Northeast LLC petitioner owner variance under section seventeen point one zero point three B of the zoning ordinance to permit the installation of a ground sign within two feet of the public right of way, whereas twenty feet is required. The parcel is located at one Continental Boulevard in the C two general commercial and Aqua Fire Conservation Districts, tax map four D lot zero five four dash zero one, case number twenty tw- I'm sorry, ZBA twenty twenty dash twenty eight.
Second.
Alright, motion made by Patrick, seconded by Kathy. Uh, Patrick, are you in favor?
Yes, I am.
Kathy, are you in favor?
Yes.
Rodney, are you in favor?
Yes.
Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
I as well am in favor. That passes five zero zero. And uh, that brings us to item sixteen, PMG Northeast LLC petitioner owner variance under section seventeen point ten point four H of the zoning ordinance to permit the installation of two wall signs on the northern face of the gas station canopy, whereas one wall sign is permitted. Uh, the parcel's located at one Continental Boulevard in the C two general commercial and Aqua Fire Conservation Dist- Districts, tax map four D lot fifty four dash oh one, case ZBA twenty twenty dash twenty nine. And please, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Uh, again, we, if anyone needs it, we are happy to put the images on the screen, but it, as, as Jesse previously explained, this, this variance goes to the signage on the canopy. And again, it's, what we're talking about here is the canopy up on the northern side looking to have the gas station logo on one end and the lettering on the other end. And because that's two separate signs, uh would need a variance for, for that signage. As we indicated in the application, um, the combined size of those two signs is uh just under twenty-five square feet, which is well within the maximum area allowed on that facade, which would be eighty-nine square feet. Jesse's just put up on the screen here exactly what we're talking about, pointing out the northern facade that we're, we're talking about.
I actually had a question if I could.
Please.
Uh, so uh, obviously the logo is what it is. Um, you know, it's up there. The other sign, is that, is it a static sign? Is it gonna be, you know, things that are gonna be moved on and off, like lettering? Or is it just, is it a flashing sign? I mean, what type of, I mean, the logo's one thing. I mean, it's, there's nothing there, but. So um, on the screen now, you can see it, it's basically just a like white lettering saying golf on a blue background. Oh, okay, sorry. Alright, that, that, that's my question. Yeah, it's pretty basic. Okay, didn't know if it was gonna be some sort of like scrolling sign or something like that.
Yeah, so when, when we're talking about logo, we're talking about the, the circle with the, the orange and the lettering is, is the, the white letters on the black background or the blue background.
Okay, cool. So basically, we're talking about the word golf appearing twice on the north face of the canopy?
Correct.
Okay, that seems pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Uh, shall I proceed with the criteria?
Absolutely, please.
Alright, uh, in the interest of efficiency, uh I'll rely on our, our statement of the law in, in our written submission, uh but I'll quickly touch on, on the facts as they apply to each criteria. First, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Here, again, as in the previous variance application, the requested variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, uh again, replacing an existing gas station and convenience store with a new one and the neighborhood are already being uh quite commercial. Also, a decision to grant the variance would not threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. Uh, particularly here, the proposed canopy signs in the aggregate are significantly smaller than the ordinance would permit. It's just that they're divided into two separate signs.
Alright, any questions from the board? Please continue.
Thank you. Uh, second, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed by granting the variance. Again, uh, looking to section seventeen point oh one of the ordinance, uh, the requested variance here would do exactly what that, that section calls for. It would encourage effective use of signage to direct movement, advertise, and inform the public. Uh, but at the same time, it would protect public safety, preserve neighborhood character, and minimize visual clutter.
Any questions from the board? Alright, thank you.
Third, granting the variance would do substantial justice. Here, uh, denial of the requested variance would result in no appreciable benefit to the public. Again, the proposed signage is consistent, not the same, but consistent with the present canopy signage. Uh, and, and uh, the public would enjoy no benefit through a denial of this variance.
Any questions from the board? Alright, please continue.
Fourth, the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished if the variance is granted. Here again, because we're talking about replacing uh an existing gasoline station uh with a new one, uh, we don't expect the, the requested variance would have any impact on the values of surrounding lots.
Any questions from the board? Alright, please continue.
And finally, unnecessary hardship. Uh, here, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to this property. Here again, looking to section seventeen point oh one of the ordinance, we submit that the proposed camp be signed uh locations were chosen in an effort to best inform the public as it passes by the property. Uh, again, the proposed signs, we think, would actually better serve the purpose of the ordinance than would strict compliance with the ordinance. And for the same reasons, the proposed sign locations are reasonable. Uh, they make the most effective use of the site's location at the busy corner of Continental and Camp Sergeant.
Alright, thank you. Um, with that being said, uh, any questions or comments from the board at all regarding this petition?
Pretty straightforward.
Alright, I'll go ahead and open the public uh session. So anyone that's looking to speak in favor or against this petition, again, please dial the phone number that you see at the bottom of your screen. And if you're looking to speak against this petition, please dial star nine. Alright, for anyone that's looking to speak in favor of this petition, please dial star nine. Alright, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Um, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve PMG Northeast LLC petitioner owner variance under section seventeen point one zero point four H of the zoning ordinance to permit the installation of two wall signs on the northern face of a gas sta- gasoline station canopy, whereas one sign is permitted. Parcel's located at one Continental Boulevard in the C two general commercial and Aqua Fire Conservation Districts, tax map four D lot zero five four dash zero one, case number ZBA twenty twenty dash two nine.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Alright, motion made by Patrick, seconded by Kathy. Patrick, are you in favor?
Yes, I am.
Kathy, in favor?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
And I as well am in favor, so five zero zero, uh, variance passes. Um, and again, as always, as a reminder, um, the petition, uh, the butters have thirty days to appeal this.
Thank you all.
Thank you for hanging in there for a late night.
Thanks to you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much and good luck.
Take care.
Alright, next item, uh, discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern.
Concerned that Casey is totally washed out with that light.
It's great contrast, isn't it? Uh, I, I have nothing for you guys for um discussion.
Anything else? Anybody have anything? Alright. Approval of minutes?
I can't do that one.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from the July twenty ninth, twenty twenty uh zoning board meeting.
I'll second.
Alright, motion made by uh Rodney, seconded by Kathy. So Rodney, are you in favor?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ben?
Um, I'll stay and I didn't attend the meeting.
Okay, Patrick?
Saying I didn't attend the meeting.
So I'm in favor, so three zero two, minutes are approved. Who wants to make the last and final?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Alright, all in favor, nod your head.
Yes.
S.
Yes.
Five zero zero. Take care, everybody. See you in a month.
Have a great summer. Have a great Labor Day.
Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel-to-gavel coverage of town and school board meetings to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Uh, good morning. I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack New Hampshire Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.